Welcome to this Jefferson City News Tribune Forum for candidates seeking two seats on the Jefferson City School Board in the April 6th election. I'm Gary Castor, Managing Editor of the News Tribune and will serve as moderator of the forum. The forum is being conducted in a virtual format due to the pandemic. Prior to the forum, the candidates were given copies of the ground rules for the forum, which noted lengths of times given for opening and closing statements, as well as time allotments for responses to our questions. The questions for the forums were submitted by readers or by staff members of the News Tribune. The questions were not shared with any candidate before the forum. Three candidates are seeking the two school board seats. They are Ken Enlow, Lindsey Rowden, and Ian Shadrick. So let me tell you a little bit about them. Ken Enlow is the Director of Human Resources and Business Development for information technology company Huber and Associates. Enlow and his children attended J.C. schools and his grandchild currently attends. He served as Board Treasurer since spring 2018. Lindsey Rowden is a family care specialist at Freeman Mortuary. She graduated from Jefferson City High School in 1998 and has three children in the district. She has served on the board since spring 2018. Ian Shadrick works remotely as a blind rehabilitation specialist and an adjunct assistant professor of special education at Hunter College City University of New York. He has two children in the district and is looking to serve his first term on the board. So let's begin. We'll start with our opening statements. Ken will begin his opening statement.
Thank you, Gary. We appreciate the opportunity to visit with voters. And as always, it's good to be able to answer questions, but help them understand a little bit more about who we are. As you mentioned, I'm a lifetime connection to Jefferson City Public Schools. I graduated from Jefferson City High School in 1973 and had both my, all my siblings graduated from Jefferson City Public Schools, ended up coming back here. My two daughters graduated from public schools. And you mentioned I have one grandchild. I actually have a few more than that now. At the time that that profile was written, probably, so we got a few more that are in Jefferson City Public Schools. So obviously, all of us have, you know, interest, a personal interest. I do currently serve as the treasurer. I haven't been treasurer the entire time. I've been on the board like Lindsey since 2018. I started off chairing the policy committee. I did that for a couple of years. I've served as board representative, one of board representatives on the Equity Council. I've been representative to the Missouri State Teachers Association, Missouri School Boards Association, excuse me, and currently serve as treasurer. So have enjoyed, obviously, being involved. I, my initial really significant involvement got started with the J plus C bond issue. Worked very hard and then wanted to kind of continue that work as we built Capital City High School. Still, great things going on in the district and so excited about the things that we have accomplished as a community and just want to continue to work to see those things carried forward and the commitment we made to the constituents. And we still have, you know, challenges and facility issues, but other things that we're obviously focusing on as a board and just excited about the opportunity to continue that work on behalf of our students.
Okay, thank you very much. Lindsey?
Well, absolutely. Just to echo what Ken said, Gary, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you and visit with voters. I appreciate you guys being able to pivot and go to this kind of a style forum because of the pandemic. So like you said, I am an employee with Freeman Mortuary. I was born and raised here in Jefferson City. I do currently have three kids in the district, so I feel like that gives me an interesting perspective. My youngest Nora is at Bel Air School. Sadie is at Thomas Jefferson Middle School. And then Cooper is actually attending Capital City High School. So they are keeping us super busy right now. I have absolutely enjoyed the last three years on the board. I've learned a ton. You know, we've got almost 9,000 kids. We have nearly 1,500 employees. So it has been a big task and it's definitely, there's definitely been some learning curves when learning about the multimillion dollar budget and things like that that we work with. I am currently serving as the policy chair and have taken that over from Ken. So we have worked on things from cell phone policies to drug testing. There's all kinds of interesting things that come up with the policy committee. I want to continue my work and dedication on the board for lots of different reasons. But I really want to continue bridging that gap between our teachers and our administration. I think that we have made great grounds over the last several years and have lots of work to do. But our teachers are definitely the most experienced and they know what's best for our kiddos. And so really enabling them and having them kind of come up out of the classroom and work with administrators, I think, has been a great thing. I also want to continue working on a strong, long-range plan. Our community changes and it changes quickly and it changes, you know, not just every five years and every 10 years, but we need to be able to reevaluate and revisit that plan based on our numbers and things. We need to do that quite often and so I want to continue to work on that. So I'm just excited to keep up the momentum. We've got a great, a great group right now and we've got lots of work to do.
All right, thank you. Ian?
Again, I would echo Ken and Lindsey and just thank you, Gary, for the opportunity to speak particularly in this format, but also just the opportunity to share my thoughts and views with voters and to connect with folks. And while I'm not a lifelong Jeff City resident, I am, you know, fairly, fairly new by comparison to Jeff City, but I did make Jeff City our home by choice after living out of state, originally from Missouri and mid-Missouri. But when my kids were entering school age, we chose to come back to mid-Missouri and I've really seen the benefit of what mid-Missouri has to offer for our kids. And, you know, as a nearly two decades-long educator and counselor, doctoral-trained individual, I, you know, I have a, I think, a unique perspective on ways to maybe help the board move forward, help the district as a whole. And, you know, I've seen firsthand, working with districts across the state as an administrator, what that can mean for long-term success for students and post-graduation and ways to help improve things across the board. So again, I appreciate the opportunity and just am excited to have the opportunity to help the district move forward and maybe come with some new ideas that might be unique.
Very good, thank you. All right, so let's get started with our questions. Candidates will have two minutes or less for their question or their responses, and we'll start with Lindsey. So Lindsey, what brought you to the, what brought you to the decision to run? And what do you hope to accomplish if you're reelected?
Absolutely. So about three years ago, I decided, you know, I was sitting on several different boards around the community and, you know, it just seemed to be people who might be in their retirement were kind of coming forward to volunteer. And I really decided at that point that because I had three kids in the district and we were in three different buildings, that I could absolutely serve right now and provide my knowledge and things about the experiences that my kids were having. That's kind of why I decided to run. I touched earlier on some things that I'd like to accomplish. Obviously, empowering our teachers to kind of come forward and be part of our solutions is one of them. That strong, long-range plan is another. And additionally, one of the things that I would like to continue focusing on is a Grow Your Own program. This has been something that I've been passionate about the last year or so. I sat in on a presentation with some of our counterparts at Columbia Public Schools up north, and they are having a ton of success. Education nationwide, we're seeing a shortage of teachers and there's no, no better teacher than some of our own. And what these programs do are kind of go out into your community and seek out kids with a charismatic personality or maybe some extra compassion. Teachers might see some things in themselves in these kiddos and encouraging them to be teachers, encouraging them to get the education that they need and also helping them maybe get scholarships or finding placement in a school and then having them come back and be teachers here in our own community where they were so, so lucky to grow up and be educated in. So I think that strong Grow Your Own program is definitely a top priority for me. We have several different initiatives that we continue to work on. Reading is at the top of that list, so continuing to increase those reading scores and getting 100% of our kids at or above grade level continues to be high on the priority list.
Okay. Ian, same question.
So again, as a, as an educator of almost 16 years and a counselor, having been involved in a number of other districts through various means and as a statewide administrator working alongside a number of other districts, I saw firsthand the types of things that were challenges, not only here in Jefferson City, but statewide and across other districts as well. And I felt like that with my background and experience that I, again, bring a unique perspective to that. And, you know, with kids in the district and as an educator myself, I felt like I could bring some, some different perspective to that position with the board. But I also think that, you know, some of that is, again, just, just different perspective, having been both in Missouri and elsewhere and seeing what works and what doesn't. In terms of priorities, certainly the literacy rate and helping to improve that is high on my list, as well as continuing to improve our math rates. The overall graduation rate is another big concern and something that I would like to help us work towards. But I think a big part of that is working firsthand with our teachers and our staff to ensure that they are brought to the table, that they're a big part of that discussion and determining what works and what doesn't for the district and for the students as a whole and making sure that, again, those voices are heard and other staff for that matter as well. So I think those are priorities. And then the other big priority for me is to ensure that we're using database decision-making as we go through and look at new policies and look at changes, you know, expanding or, you know, changing opportunities, things of that nature. And then lastly, just improving opportunities for, you know, awareness and understanding of what post-secondary opportunities might be for students.
All right, thank you. Ken, same question.
So we were, it was asked this question in 2018, you know, why, why do you want to run for school board? And I've joked about the fact that one, someone in my coworker mine came to me back when I was running my campaign and said, "So I guess if you, if you win the election, you won't be working here anymore." And I said, "Well, no, that's not quite the way this works. It, this is a, this, this pay of zero is not going to probably replace my current income." So, you know, why do you do it? And obviously, I think all of us have the same passion and commitment to our community. And that's really, you know, my motivation hasn't changed since 2018. I mean, I really love this community and I firmly believe, and I believe for all my life, even though my parents were not educators, they, I came from a family that is strong supporters of public education. But I believe from a business perspective and from a community perspective, we're just, our community is so much better and stronger by having good schools, both public and parochial. And so I think we're fortunate in that we do have good systems on the public-private parochial side. And so all of those work together to make our community better. And so obviously, working to, you know, to bring my experience and my passion, I have a leadership experience in different roles in management, both in public and private sector. And I, I really try to bring that to everything that I, you know, deal with on the board currently. And I believe that that experience is helpful in terms of, you know, as we make decisions. It's a large organization, as Lindsey said, 1,500 employees and, you know, organization that sizes with multimillion dollar budget. There are a lot of things that organizational principles and concepts that carry forward and across all organizations that work effectively. One of my real strong passions is for positive leadership. And again, I think, and trying to work with having vision and having a positive influence in terms of knowing that we're not always going to agree on everything and there are always going to be challenges. There are questions that have to be asked and there are things that we need to do to say, "Well, look at this critically and let's examine and look carefully." But we can do that in a way that is positive and collaborative and everybody working together. And so that's my commitment is to continue that spirit of leadership and positive collaborative kind of effort at the board level.
Okay, let's go to our next question. This comes from a reader and we'll start with Ian. "Our school district fails each year to meet the state average performance in core subjects and continues to significantly lag behind its neighbors and districts of similar size in academics. What concrete steps are you prepared to take to ensure improvement? And how will you hold the superintendent accountable?"
I think first we have to look at the data that we have available across those areas. I think the other part of that is ensuring that we are bringing both our building-level administrators and our teachers to the table to discern where those next steps are and helping to improve that, that process. I think it's got to be more than just looking at test scores. But at the same time, I think we need to take a hard look at, you know, the different approaches that we're using and the data that we're collecting. You know, is that data giving us the right answers? And if not, you know, where, where can we make changes? And I think that's going to be one step in that process. I think as far as administration, you know, again, you know, I think we need to take a look at what it is that we're collecting, why we're collecting one element of data over another and what it is that we can look to to get solid answers and then work with that data to make significant change, you know, across the board as far as helping to improve those scores.
Okay. Ken, same question.
Yeah, could, Gary, could you repeat the question? Because I want to make sure I address it.
Sure. "Sure. Our school district fails each year to meet the state average performance in core subjects and continues to significantly lag behind its neighbors and districts of similar size in academics. What concrete steps are you prepared to take to ensure improvement? And how will you hold the superintendent accountable?"
Well, obviously, to me, again, that's something that we look at every, every time we meet. We, as a board, talk about the, you know, the measurement that we're, the measurements we're using. And as Ian mentioned, there are many different, you know, sources that that, that data is coming from, places and ways that we can dissect that data. So again, it's finding the right measurements, it's finding those things. There's no question that our, that our success, academic success of our students in the key core areas of reading and math, those things have to improve. And we talk about that all the time and we look at specific things that can happen every day, day in and day out at our schools. Ultimately, our responsibility as a board is, is, you know, to supervise and to manage and hire the superintendent. I mean, that's our, by law, that's our primary and kind of exclusive role. So as we work with Dr. Lithcomb and, you know, laying out what our expectations are and how he then takes and leads through the administrative people on his staff and then ultimately down into the classroom, you know, that is absolutely what we have to do every day is to look at how we're doing that to ensure that those academic measurements, that those students are prepared to move on to the next grade and that they have those skills that they need. And then ultimately with graduation, our, our goal, again, we talk about all the time, is that our students, when they leave our schools, that they're career college-ready, that they're able to move forward into whatever their path is and that they're able to be successful. And so those, those are the things that we're charged with and those are the challenges that we have every single day and we absolutely have to be asking those questions all the time. What can we do to get better? How do we more effectively make our students successful in their academic achievement?
Okay. Lindsey, same question.
You bet. So the, the first part of the question kind of talked about how we, we do get compared quite a bit to some of our neighboring communities. And I think that when people are comparing districts, they need to make sure that they're actually comparing apples to apples. While sometimes we might have the same amount of students, our free and reduced lunches are different and those kids' homes look a little bit different. And so what's going on inside of them is different as well, which means that they will be scoring differently. So I think we need to be careful that when we're comparing. One of the things that we've done in recent years in the district, everyone knows that J.C. reads has been one of our, one of our big things. And you talk to any teacher, I know throughout the pandemic, I was concerned about what kind of things my kids would lose, what kind of knowledge or ground they were going to lose while we were at home in the spring. And every teacher said, "Just keep them reading. As long as you can keep them reading, they'll be successful in all other areas." So we continue that J.C. reads focus. We are collecting data and we're collecting it not only on a building level, but on a grade level and on a classroom level so that we can then compare those numbers and maybe see if a teacher maybe needs a little bit more help with some of the kids in her classroom. That's part of that collaboration that we've been working towards. So I think that we are collecting and measuring and comparing the data in the right way. It's just going to take a little bit of time before we see those drastic improvements happen. We've also implemented some of those reading coaches in our buildings, which I think is really, really helpful. As Ken mentioned, our job as a board is to manage the superintendent. And at this point, I think that the plan that we have in place to look at and manage those numbers, we're definitely, the plan's strong and we anticipate moving in the right direction. So I think we just kind of stay the course. We are going to actually see some improved graduation rates coming up in those numbers that'll, that'll be shared later in the spring. So we're really excited about that, too.
Okay. So a follow-up question. I'm going to give you each a minute to answer this. So if you look back in a three-year window and let's say we're talking about reading and math and we were drawing a trend line here as far as the number of students able to reach grade level, reading, grade level math, are we trending up? Are we flat or are we declining? So Ian, we'll start with you.
I know that the most recent data shows that we are improving, especially in reading, but certainly there's more improvement to be had.
Okay. Ken?
Well, I think, again, numbers, you look at different numbers and they can be segmented so many different ways. Obviously, this year has been such an incredible challenge. And so I think there's so many questions about what impact it's going to have. You know, the, the time that we spent out of seat. I'm so pleased that our district was able to develop a plan, implement a plan and successfully execute the plan to get kids back in seat. And so I think that that is a very positive thing. Again, there's a, I think there are a lot of questions that still have to be answered about the impact of this last year or more and the pandemic and how it's impacted our achievement in those key areas.
Okay, but again, it's a three-year window. So if I give you the caveat of the last year, which way are we going?
I think, again, the trend is up, but not at the, not where we want to be. I think it's clearly, everybody would agree, we've still got to move the needle and still got to, to move in a more positive direction.
Okay. Lindsey, same question.
You bet. So if we broke it down over the last three years, there's definitely improvements, small, but improvements. If we break it down over the course of the last year, I think that you'll see us flat in the area of reading and then actually declining a bit in the area of math. And like, just like Ken mentioned with the pandemic, we don't know what that's going to completely look like. We know that kids are going to have some deficiencies from being out of the classroom that long on top of then summer, which always has some deficiencies with summer. The next challenge will be the amount of kids that were homeschooled this year as opposed to being in seat. The amount of kids that were homeschooled and then the amount of kids that chose to have a virtual learning experience. So to see if those kids were able to retain the knowledge that they needed. So I think a little bit of a decline in math and even up on reading.
Okay. All right, let's go to our next question. Comes from a reader. Ken, we'll start with you. "Inequities are, inequities are apparent, both in the physical facilities and the education performance outcomes in Jefferson City Elementary Schools. How should those inequities be addressed?"
Well, inequities, I'm assuming that they're referring to academic achievement or, I don't know. I mean, we clearly have differences in our elementary buildings in terms of facilities. We absolutely have put a focus and continued emphasis on making sure that all of our facilities are equitable and that there absolutely are no, there's not any school that is, you know, above any other in terms of the, the quality and the, you know, the niceness of the facility. In terms of the populations, the student populations, we clearly have differences that, again, are directly, many times directly related to the student population. And so those inequities and those differences that show up oftentimes are reflective of the challenges that those students bring in the door. And I continue to say that, you know, I think one of the things that is very hard for someone who's not in the classroom to appreciate, and I don't even claim to, to understand it fully, is the challenge that our staff has every day as they greet the students that come to their classroom and come from so many different backgrounds in many cases and many different experiences and walk in the door with so many different things that they are facing as a young child outside of that school building and that the, the staff has to then deal with and meet those kids where they are and try to, try to help them achieve and accomplish what they need to. So again, our, as we looked at the completion of Capital City and the renovation of Jefferson City, we said all along the focus and emphasis had to be on those two facilities being, you know, very similar and very equal in terms of quality. And so I think we're always looking at that in terms of our elementary buildings, our middle schools and continuing to try to improve where we need to.
Okay. Lindsey, same question.
Okay, well, this, this question's just a little bit vague. So without knowing specifically where they're going with the equity question, I would venture to guess that they're talking about the facilities as well. I think sometimes people equate new with better. You know, I attended several of our different buildings and Jefferson Junior High School was one of my very favorite buildings that I was in to date. And it's one of our oldest ones that we're still using as the academic center. So when I first came on the board, I was able to tour every single building that we have in our entire district. And I can say that I would be proud to send my kids to any one of our buildings. We definitely have some overcrowding issues. So I know that, you know, it's not popular to pull up to a school and see a trailer parked in a parking lot or on a playground. That's definitely not what we're going for. I know that at our board meeting last night, we shared some numbers about overcrowding. And Thomas Jefferson, the middle school, is overcrowded by almost 100 kids. Bel Air School is overcrowded by over 40. So just know in those long-range planning goals, we're constantly revisiting those numbers and the enrollment numbers to see where our community maybe needs more support and some changes. But to echo what Ken said, our goal is to always make sure that all the kids in our community, every single student and family are receiving the same opportunities, even with like the athletic projects that we're doing right now at Jefferson City High School and Capital City. We have almost overlaid kind of a plan to make sure if one has it, the other one does as well. So that's absolutely one of our goals. I can assure any reader that we have got fantastic I can assure any reader that we have got fantastic teachers and staff in our district at every single building. And as I said before, I would be more than confident to send my kids to any of our, of our buildings, for sure.
Okay. Ian?
So I would echo both Ken and Lindsay in terms of looking particularly at the facilities question. I think that the district has done a nice job of, as they have expanded, especially with Capital City, that they've worked to make that an equitable environment in comparison to, to Jeff City High. And I, you know, I think they've done a nice job in that process. You know, as far as the elementary level, I think certainly there are some overcrowding issues as well as the middle school and, and some things that can be done long term there. I know that's part of the, the current process for the board and what they're looking at. And I think that, again, I think in keeping with that mindset of making sure that things are equitable from a facilities perspective, I think that's, that's certainly part of the process. And thus far, I think they've done a good job with that. I think from a programmatic standpoint, the biggest thing is just to ensure that our educators, you know, as they, as we begin new initiatives, new programs, that, you know, as Lindsay mentioned, everyone who has, you know, access to one element, whatever that program or initiative may be, that that's offered district wide to all families and to all students involved. And I think, again, they, they've done a nice job with that. I think it's a matter of continuing to move that process forward.
Okay. Next question, we'll start with Lindsay. Comes from a reader, several years ago, the board requested in the taxpayers approved substantial increase in the property tax to build a second high school to remedy the overcrowding. The board has now announced they will spend $20 million on building new athletic facilities to correct inequities between the two high schools. They also announced they were considering an $80 million building project to deal with overcrowding. Where did the $20 million for the athletics expansion come from? And why shouldn't the taxpayers only pay $60 million to deal with overcrowding?
You bet. So that question, I'm going to kind of break it up just a little bit. So when, so I grew up here in the community. I graduated in 1998. In the course of my, my schooling, from kindergarten to 12th grade, two new schools were built. They were middle schools, Thomas Jefferson and Lewis and Clark. And those are the middle schools that have been here now for well over 20 years. Since then, we've also added Pioneer Trail. As our community has grown and our enrollment numbers are now pushing up to the 9,000, 9,000 student mark, we have not grown our facilities here in our community at the rate that we needed to. So at this point, we are making up ground for the deficiencies that have happened over the last 25 years. And those projects are expensive. So that's kind of the first part of it. We're, we're making up ground with, with adding and the need to add these additional places for kids to be. As for the athletic fields, when we talked about J plus C, we always ensured voters that there was going to be same, same theme at each location. It wasn't going to be the old school versus the new school. It was going to be Jefferson City High School and Capital City High School. We also, when we passed J plus C, we were very open with saying that we were opening with just practice facilities. So we completed those projects on time and under budget, like we said that we would. The second part of that now is adding the things that they need at these schools for these kids to compete at an athletic level. The one thing we know about kids that compete as athletes, whether it be band or baseball, those kids tend to be more successful in the classroom, which is our ultimate goal, is educating these kids so that they can graduate and go out and become strong members of our community. So the money, where did the money come from? So that money was completely set aside in our facilities budget. And Ken, you can correct me if I'm wrong on, on what that bucket is actually called. But that money was completely set aside for that. Strong schools build strong communities. So we need the community support to keep moving forward to build these strong schools.
Okay, Ian, same question.
So again, I, I see the overcrowding issues and I'm aware of that process. I think part of that is to ensure that as we move forward, both with Capital City and potential projects in the future, that we are working to ensure that equity of, of facilities across the board. As Lindsay, Lindsay mentioned with J plus C, part of that is to ensure that Capital City does have the same facilities as, as Jeff City High. And I think that's important. I think the other part of that, though, is to make sure that we are, you know, addressing overcrowding at all levels so that it doesn't equate to other issues down the road. I think it is important that the community have buy in, you know, understanding that, what that process looks like, that extracurriculars and, and what that means for a number of students. You know, in terms of their overall success. So many students who, that those, those opportunities are in many cases, the reason they come to school, the reasons they stay involved. At the same time, you know, I think it's important that the community as a whole understand what that impact has on, again, the long term goals of those students and their overall success throughout education. You know, I think the, the additional money is an important part of that process.
Okay. Ken, same question.
Obviously, as Lindsay said, when we did the J plus C, we talked about that, what the facilities at Capital City were going to look like, but that the long term goal, there were going to be practice facilities, not competition, we continue to share. But the long term goal is to finish those out and then to add additional facilities at Jefferson City High School, again, to make those comparable. Fortunately, we, there's been a combination of things. So specifically to answer the question of how we've been able to do that and how the finances have been there, I, it's a combination of things. One, I think we've done a, a good job. We, we did a great job with the construction project by using an, an approach that allows, allowed us to save on the construction of Capital City and the renovation. So we came away from that with the ability to put some additional things that weren't in the original plan. And then with favorable interest rates, with some savings, some ability to restructure some of the bonding that didn't, didn't require a bond issue or any tax increase or anything. That's where the additional money came to build out these athletic facilities at the two high schools, make them exactly comparable. And that, again, has always been a long term goal. We're, we're able to reach that sooner than we thought we would. And that's a very, very positive thing. We are discussing now, as Lindsay mentioned, even last night at our board meeting, we're looking at other facility issues and what the, what the next few months and years look like. How can we take advantage of, of potentially a no tax increase bond restructuring to give us the resources to, to build out? Again, whether it be at the elementary level, we know we, we've addressed the nine through 12 overcrowding that existed. And now we know we also have K through eight crowding issues, including the middle school and elementaries. So always looking at how we can most effectively use the resources we have. Our budget report last night from our CFO was very favorable in terms of looking at where we are financially and what the future looks like and having the opportunity to reinvest in, in the things that we need to, to get to where we want to be.
Okay. We're going to circle back on this question. I'll give you both, give you all three a minute. If I'm reading between the lines of this reader's question, what I'm, what I'm hearing is the district has an overcrowding issue that it knew about before the athletic complex money was spent. And that $20 million that was realized through savings, through refinancing, wouldn't it have been better to have put that in a piggy bank to use for overcrowding that would affect much, more, much more of the district than the high school? And, and then make the second priority to deal with the athletic complex? So take a minute, respond to that suggestion. Start with you, Lindsay.
Well, so that's a, that's a, that's a great question. So a couple of different things. So the athletic field situation, the, the last reader asked about equity and creating, you know, equality amongst these kids. And we need to do that at Capital City High School. Those kids need to have a place to play football and baseball and their band needs to have a place to practice and compete and their dance team, et cetera. And so then that is something that we promised these families that we would do. We came up, you know, this, the tornado unfortunately came through our community and we were able to acquire some land around Jefferson City High School, which has then, of course, allowed us to speed up this process a little bit. We don't want to leave all that open ground and the mess that we have on our, which is now our property. So the timing wise is actually good for us to get that project started. I don't know that we're ready, that we were ready to make a recommendation on what the new, you know, whether it's a new elementary school or whether it's a new middle school or five, six buildings. We just weren't ready to make that recommendation. Should we have been ready? Probably so. But with the pandemic and those things, we just weren't ready to make that. So we, we went with the project that we were ready to move forward and that we also promised the, the community that we would do.
Okay, Ian, same question.
As Lindsay mentioned, I think it is important that the district meet the, the guides of, of what they, of J plus C was intended for. And I think the equity of the facility is a big part of that. On the other hand, the overcrowding is a long term issue. It's been an ongoing issue. And I think it's something that the district likely should have had a better response to. I think it's something that is important for the overall health of the district, but more importantly, you know, long term success of our students. And I think that's likely something that, that should have been addressed. But again, not having all of the information and not necessarily, you know, understanding maybe with feasibility studies and the like, where the best option lies. With the exception of additional bonds, I think it's also important to, to look at the equity that's, that's at hand or lack thereof.
Okay, Ken, same question.
I, I think it clearly is just, it was a matter of, of timing. And there's always, you can always look, you know, on Monday morning, you can always sit and look critically and, and, you know, take apart the decisions that were made. I'm, I'm a big football, I'll use the, you know, the football analogy. It's easy on Monday morning to, you know, to, to say why the Chiefs didn't win the Super Bowl. In, in the middle of the game at the time, it's, it's a lot harder to make that. And so I, I think, again, we know that we have to address the issues in K through eight. We have not vetted and done all the critical analysis to the point that we know exactly what that's going to look like. And until we do, we shouldn't spend the money to do that. These were not mutually exclusive. So to do the, the athletic facilities in the way that we did that, it did not take out of the, off the table and, and remove from the possibility that we can move forward with those, addressing those overcrowding issues in the K through eight. And so again, it was just mentioned of the, the unfortunate event of the tornado. Those things happened. We had good fortune in terms of low interest rates, restructuring, savings. All of those things came together and the timing was there. We made the decision and I think it was a good decision. And I think in retrospect, we'll look back and see that ultimately it was the best decision for all kids.
Okay. Next question. Let's see, we'll start with, yeah, my order here. Ian, comes from a reader, what incentives should there be to draw experienced innovative teachers and staff to underachieving schools in the district? Those with higher ratios of lower income and transient students?
From the initial teacher to any types of incentives that could be offered to teachers who may be looking to, to do something different or make a change in terms of grade level or things of that nature, you know, all of those are opportunities. But I think first and foremost, looking at what those opportunities are for incoming student, or excuse me, incoming staff and recruitment of faculty is, is going to be step number one.
Okay. Ken?
Yeah, repeat the question if you would please, again, to try and understand and make sure I can speak to it.
Sure. What incentives should there be to draw experienced innovative teachers and staff to underachieving schools in the district? Those with higher ratios of lower income and transient students?
Well, I think the, the staff recruitment is a ongoing challenge that I know our Chief of Learning, Shelby Scarborough, and the human resources side of, of our, of our district are looking at always. Lindsay mentioned earlier, the grow your own. And we have looked at not only that approach where, which has been used successfully in other places. And the focus there again is helping show students who are in our district that there's a path for them to go into education and to ultimately come back and impact the lives of students just like they've been impacted by their teachers. So I think that in conjunction with our efforts to also increase our minority representation in our staff, we continually work on. And I know the, the district personnel are continuing to look at ways for us to recruit minorities from colleges and, and things that are out there. The, you know, we, there are many, many things related to recruiting that we, we talk about and are not simply a challenge for us locally. They're a nationwide challenge in terms of recruiting and education. And so I think we're, we're always researching, looking for opportunities to try to leverage existing resources, looking for new resources and trying to, trying to, to recruit in a way that we get the best and the brightest, coming back to, to go to every one of our schools, whether they be, you know, those that are, that are more challenged in terms of their student population. We, we had a couple of great examples last night in our difference makers at the board meeting of student, or excuse me, of staff members who were having a tremendous impact on the lives of kids. We had a parent come forward, give an example, and a principal come forward. I think you'll find that every, in every building, every day, that's happening.
Okay. Lindsay, same question.
Of course. So I know that this reader specifically mentioned lower income and transient families. And I think just, you know, growing up here in Jefferson City, our community changes every year, every single year. And I think that if folks spent some time in our buildings, they would be surprised to see the diversity that's in each one of our buildings. And so it really is very equal. You're, you're seeing pretty consistent free and reduced lunch across all of our schools. And so when it comes to the diversity of our kids, I think that we're very similar in any building that you would go into. That being said, we're always trying to recruit experienced and dynamic teachers. We want the very best teacher. Anytime we go into the interview, we want the person who has the, is the very, very best candidate to teach our kids. One thing to note is that when teachers come in, or administrators even come in and work for our district, they are working for the Jefferson City School District, not necessarily South School or West School. They may be working in that building today or maybe over the course of the last 10 years. But if we see deficiencies in different buildings where we might need somebody with a little different experience, we have not been afraid to go to those teachers and say, hey, we really could use your expertise at Moral Heights Elementary School and maybe asking the teacher to transfer over there. So we're definitely always looking for the best folks and we have gotten creative with moving some of our, some of our expertise from building to building. Incentive wise, I think we've done a really good job of aligning our salary schedule to be very competitive with what salaries look like in the States. And I think that, that any teacher would be proud to come work for us and would be compensated very, very nicely.
Okay. Next question, we'll start with Ken. Comes from a reader who says, some school districts are reevaluating compensation for district leaders and superintendents in light of lower graduation rates and academic performance. For instance, For instance, Springfield Public Schools pays its superintendent a lower base salary and applies a performance bonus if the district's students achieve or exceed academic goals set for the year by the board. Given our district's performance over the last 10 to 15 years, would you commit to formally proposing this kind of compensation plan for the superintendent and other chief administrators if elected? Why or why not?
So to say that tomorrow I would propose that, the answer is no, I wouldn't. Because I would, that's a discussion and a decision that I would want to evaluate and would want to make over, would it be worth evaluating? Absolutely, I would say we, you know, it would be worth considering. But to say that if I'm elected, I'm going to propose that tomorrow? No, I'm not going to commit to that because I don't know that. I would want to look at, again, across the state and across the nation to look at what's worked effectively, you know, what has been an effective way to compensate and to incent administrators. So I wasn't aware that Springfield had done that. I, again, to say that that would be off the table, no, I don't think it's off the table. But I don't know, I can tell you that I don't have enough knowledge about that kind of approach or that kind of a plan that I would introduce that tomorrow or April the 7th, if I'm reelected to the board. So, and I think our superintendent, the one thing I've appreciated about Dr. Lithgow is that I think he is always very open to us as a board in terms of our evaluation of him and his accountability. There's absolutely, my experience with him over the last three years has been he's never been afraid to step up and say, hold me accountable, I take responsibility. And, you know, that he would only expect to be compensated commensurate with, again, the size of our district and comparison to other districts in the state. And so I'm very comfortable in saying that he would not be afraid to have that conversation and say to the board, you know, you, you hold me accountable and you can put high expectations on me. And I've appreciated that about him and would expect that that would be his response if we had that conversation.
Okay. Lindsay, same question.
So like Ken, I am not familiar with this concept and don't know enough about it to commit to doing it today. One thing that I would say is if we ever change the way that we compensate any of our administrative team, we would need to be willing to do the same thing for teachers. And I don't think that this, you know, just with what I know now, that it would be fair to say that I'm going to pay or bonus the teacher based on their kid's test scores or their graduation rate. I mean, we all want the same goal. We all want what's best for our kids. We all want to educate them and graduate them and have them be, you know, the best members of society that they can be. But I'm not sure a performance-based budget is the way that I would go.
Okay. Ian, same question.
So as an educator and administrator, again, I'm aware of the concept. I wasn't aware that Springfield had added that to theirs. It's not something that I would support. You know, again, I don't think it's off the table. I think it's worth researching and determining how districts are doing that. I think to apply one simple metric or even, you know, graduation rate plus, you know, a couple of other metrics is not the approach. I think it's, it's too stark of a contrast to make. I think the other side of that, as Lindsay mentioned, I think if we're looking equitably, we've got to look at more than just higher-level administration. We would have to look at what that would mean for teachers and their, their base pay and any bonus rates. And again, to equate that to a series of exam scores or, you know, statewide testing scores and the like, I wouldn't necessarily support that idea. Again, I think as far as higher-level administrator, superintendent, you know, other chief academic officers and the like, I think it's in, you know, a potential area to research, but it's not something that I would be in favor of automatically, no.
Okay. Let's go to our closing statements. So we'll start with Lindsay. You'll have two minutes for your closing statement.
Well, hi again, Gary. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to walk us through these questions. And I appreciate all the readers' questions. I just look forward to hopefully continuing my work in our community. I truly do want the best for all the kids in our community, all, almost 9,000 of them, and all of our teachers who work so hard every day. We truly have a really, really great team. And we're lucky to have such awesome schools in our small community. I would hope that the folks of Jefferson City and surrounding areas can gather with us and hold hands with us and all start marching in the same direction. It's really easy to compare us to some of the smaller schools around us, and we just are different. We are really big, and that's something that I didn't even necessarily realize until I came on the board, just how big, big of a district we are and how the needs of our kids have changed so much, even over the course of the last 30 years when I was in school. So I just would just ask everyone to kind of rally with us and walk with us, and let's get better together.
Okay. Ian, your closing statement.
Gary, again, I just want to thank you and the readers for the opportunity. I appreciate that very much. This has been helpful and I appreciate hearing from them. You know, again, as an individual who has nearly two decades of experience as an educator and a counselor, you know, and as a professor now, you know, again, I think I bring a unique perspective. I would welcome the opportunity to bring that to the board. And just, again, I feel like building that community relationship and rapport is important, something that we can do to certainly move forward with a number of the challenges that the district faces. But, you know, again, the district is doing a lot of good things and excited to help have the opportunity to move that forward and see improvement and advancement throughout the district. And, you know, welcome the opportunity to talk to voters as well and, you know, just be able to have an open dialogue. So I appreciate today's opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ken, your closing statement.
Well, Gary, I'd actually echo the thanks on behalf of us. Again, a little bit different than the forum that we had three years ago, but a lot of things are different. And I think all of us are, we're adjusting in some ways. But also I think, you know, we welcome the time to get back together face-to-face. And I would like to say it's nice to meet Ian. I had not had an opportunity to meet him or really get to interact with him any. And so it's, that's been helpful also, just getting to meet him and appreciate his willingness to step forward. I would just echo what I kind of said at the beginning. I look forward to the opportunity potentially to continue the work that we're doing. I think there are some great things happening. We have work to be done. But my focus will continue to be on positive leadership, you know, visionary leadership, like I've tried to demonstrate these last three years on the board. An emphasis on, you know, us getting better on achievement by our students and on excellence. And then just being engaged with the community. Again, just my love and commitment for the community and the firm belief that when our schools are stronger and better, that our community is stronger and that everyone benefits. Every person, whether you have a student attending Jefferson City Schools or any of our parochial private schools, whether you have a student attending, you still, as a member of this community, are better off when our schools are strong. From a business perspective, we all know that two key things on attracting business, that's good schools and good healthcare. And so firmly believe that our work to make our schools stronger is absolutely beneficial to everyone. And so just forward the opportunity to continue that work and know that we're doing important things every day and lives are being changed every day. So, thanks.
All right. Thank you. So I want to thank the candidates for appearing in today's forum. Now through April 6th, we will be accepting questions for these candidates. The questions can be emailed to vote@newstrabune.com. In the ensuing three weeks, we'll be publishing answers to those reader questions as well as stories on all the contested races on the Jefferson City ballot. Our coverage will culminate then with a reader's guide on Sunday, April 4th. Our goal through these forums, stories and question and answers columns is to help you, the voter, make an informed decision on April 6th. We encourage you to take advantage of these resources, share them with your friends and family, and then get out and vote. Candidates, again, thank you for appearing today.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.